I love this thing because I want to take it home because maybe I can get a word in edgewise at home if I use this at home.
Not likely.
You're right, not likely. Call the meetings or let the record show that this is a regular city council meeting held on Monday, March 20, 2017. All members of council are present with the exception of Councilwoman Hershey who is traveling on business. The press has been duly notified. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Council is going to remain standing for a moment of silence. You are welcome to join us if you'd like to. You're also welcome to sit if you don't want to. During that moment of silence, if you wouldn't mind, keep our firefighters in your prayer because tonight they are at a structure fire right now and they had just left another fire this afternoon and they're on the way to a structure fire working on that. So if you would keep them in your prayer. Item number one on our agenda is a resolution 2017-01 to honor Representative Ralph Norman. Ralph, would you mind coming up here, please?
How are you? Yeah, you doing alright? Looking a little tired.
This is resolution 2017-01, an appreciation for the outstanding public service by Representative Ralph Norman. Whereas Representative Ralph Norman was born in Belton, South Carolina, resides in Rock Hill, South Carolina, is a graduate of Rock Hill High School and Presbyterian College, and whereas Representative Ralph Norman helped grow his family's property and construction business, the Warren Norman Company, to the foremost commercial real estate developer in South Carolina, whereas Ralph Norman has been married to his wife Elaine for 42 years, no idea how you did it, and they have four married children and 15 grandchildren. Whereas Representative Norman has been a past president of York County Board of Realtors, the Rotary Club, York County Home Builders Association, and whereas Representative Ralph Norman has served as the Board of Directors for Piedmont Medical Center, Salvation Army, the YMCA of York County, United Way, Winthrop Eagle Club, South State Bank of York County, founding member, South State Bank Executive Board, Children's Detention Home, and the Medical University of South Carolina Board of Visitors. Now I know how you did it. He was never home. And whereas Representative Ralph Norman has been honored by the Order of the Palmetto Taxpayer Hero Award, the York County Realtor of the Year, the Lake Wiley Citizen of the Year, Salvation Army Distinguished Order, Distinguished Others Award, and whereas Representative Norman was elected to serve in the South Carolina House of Representatives in 2004 and again in 2009, and whereas Representative Ralph Norman has exhibited unwavering commitment and willingness and ability to understand and respond to the concerns of the people of the city of Tegucay, and whereas Representative Norman has faithfully, with honor, integrity, and great distinction for over nine years, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the Tegucay City Council do hereby commend Representative Ralph Norman for his time-honored legacy of dedication, enthusiasm, and outstanding published to the state of South Carolina and to the city of Tegucay. That's yours.
Thank you.
Hang on the wall. If you want to get a picture of him. Do you guys want to come down? Do a picture with everybody if you don't mind. Hey Charlie, want to come out of here for a second? What do you need? Yep, yep, we can. Like, we like each other. You don't want us to do the knee pop too or anything like that? We're good. We're good. You know, one of the things that we wanted to mention also is that we have our Tegucay Veterans Association here and Ralph has been a tremendous asset to the Tegucay Veterans Association. It's really great that you guys are here to support him. I think we could get Cliff to go outside with all you guys and take a picture with Ralph so we can continue our meeting. Anything you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to say, Tegucay, George, Bill Fenton, many of you may have known him when I first ran into office, he took an interest in the campaign and...
I couldn't get anybody to, you know, I was running against two other people and so I just got out there and nobody would take me to, as a manager, so Bill Fenton said, "You need to come to Tegucay." He said, "These are the people you need to go door-to-door to. Tegucay is active. They vote." So we did, and Tegucay's always, he's been so special to the veterans. When you came to Columbia, God, I mean, the people, the things that y'all have done, the roundtables that Charlie, that Jones, Howard Jones, he used to have a roundtable discussion, and it was just great. So I'm grateful and honored to get this award. This will go in Washington, DC. So there's a lot of people that says, "Tegucay is not going to come out on May 2nd." And I said, "You're wrong. Tegucay comes out and votes." But I really appreciate you, you're great people here. It's like it's a wonderful life. You see people that come out for each other and that's what's special about Tegucay. So thank you for this honor and award and I look forward to serving many more years. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Good luck tonight. I've got a debate that I'm in, so I've got to run, so otherwise I would stay and answer any questions or anything. Thank you so much.
To keep America beautiful. Is that what it is?
I don't know. We're dwindling in numbers if I tell you that. We really are.
Talk to Dave. He's getting all his buddies moving down here. Not only veterans, the beautification committee.
At this time, I'm going to move on to item number 1B on the agenda, which is the
Keep America Beautiful Outstanding Performance Award, and I'd like to ask the beautification committee to come up here. Hey bud, how are you? You doing good? Really? How'd you do that? You don't know?
All the volunteers, I see you.
Alright, we're going to move over this way a little bit more so that people can see you beyond the podium. And at this time, I'm going to ask Allison Woodruff to make the presentation.
I'll speak very loudly. You can't hear me right from the background.
Here we go, we can try this.
I'm Allison Woodruff with York County Collection and Recycling. I am the staff liaison for the Keep York County Beautiful Board. We offered mini grants last year for groups in York County to beautify areas or have litter prevention projects, recycling projects, and Tegucay Beautification Committee submitted a fabulous application. I'm only one on the nomination committee, but I was like, "We are so doing this. The rest of y'all can not agree with me, but we're going to do this anyway." They all loved it. When it came time for the project and when they reported, these guys reported with so much detail, so many photos, I knew exactly what the project looked like without having been there, and that's not something I can say very often. So I submitted the project to Keep South Carolina Beautiful for the state awards. And so in Myrtle Beach, a few weeks ago, they were honored there, and so I accepted the award on their behalf. But now, for this beautification committee, Patty and the rest of you guys, I know that there are more of you, I am super impressed, super, super impressed. So I'm going to set the microphone down just a second because I want to show you this beautiful award that they get and hand it directly to you. And I refused to take it out of its box because I was terrified, and so I kept it in my office until yesterday because I didn't even want to carry it around in the vehicle. But this is for you and your leadership. And you know what? You are, Colin is probably the youngest volunteer on the committee. You are, you're not even... I'm going to give you a Keep York County Beautiful shirt. It's going to be a little bit big for you because I think that you're pretty rad and you represent everything that we want all of the kids to be like. Thank you so much. And, go get me, probably you. We are having another round of mini grant offerings again, so if you want to take part in that again, I know that this group is in need of volunteers. So please consider that. I have a black belt background, it's a little bit better. I couldn't manage to keep plants alive, but you know, if they can help, they can help you guys if you help them. And even if it's just pulling weeds and doing regular yard maintenance stuff, I know we all know how to do that, consider helping them. If this guy can do it, if this guy can do it, can we not all do this? Can we not all help? Even just a little bit? They have workdays twice a month? Actually, we're having one tomorrow morning at 8:00. So hello, everybody in this room, share it. I know you have social media accounts. Get that out there. Help them. This is just a tremendous opportunity. This is one of the nine gardens in that area, is that correct? It's just amazing, guys. So I just want you guys to support your community and thank you again.
Patty, 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 would you guys stay here a second, please?
We'd like to get a picture of all the beautification committee members.
And...
And I don't want to have to single you out because I know who you are.
And Jen knows who you are, so she will call you out.
And we also know who she is.
Exactly. Come on, Jen, you too.
And for those who don't know, these are still of our four children.
Okay. Thanks, Jen. Item number 1C on the agenda is the Oath of Office for Firefighter Fernando Diaz. Fernando, would you join us up here, please? Good, how are you? You doing alright?
Yes, sir.
A little nervous?
My heart just started beating, yes, sir.
Really? That's good, it's beating. Appreciate it.
It starts beating rapidly.
Alright, so here's your oath, and would you repeat after me?
Yes, sir.
I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
Would you raise your right hand?
That I am duly qualified... That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state...
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties...
To exercise the duties.
Of the office...
Of the office.
To which I've been appointed...
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof...
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve...
And preserve.
Protect...
Protect.
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution of this state...
And the Constitution of this state.
And of the United States...
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
They give you credit cards, too. Look at that. So if you want to hold that and we'll do a little, get that out of the way.
Thank you.
You good? Chief, you're in there? You good? We got it? Good deal. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You know, before you go, I'm going to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Why are you doing this?
Honor and privilege. I grew up here in Tegucay. My parents still live in Tegucay. Actually, they live about half a mile from the firehouse, and when I was a little kid, I wanted to volunteer, but I was scared. I saw these big burlap, and I was like, "Oh, I'm just a little kid, I can't do this." But I grew up wanting to be in the civil service and thought about policing, military, or fire, and fire is what caught my eye and caught my heart and my passion. So it's a true honor and a passion.
Great.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. That is the best answer I ever had to that question. Item number 1D is the Proclamation for the Spring Pick Me Up. Whereas April 17 through April 22 is Spring Pick Me Up Week in the city of Tegucay, and whereas the city recognizes the outstanding collaboration and effort of Keep America Beautiful, Palmetto Pride, Keep York County Beautiful, the city of Tegucay staff and the volunteers to coordinate and execute the Spring Pick Me Up Festival this week. Whereas the city will offer reduced costs for items requiring a disposal fee in addition to the daily fee curbside pickup and yard debris of small household items. And whereas on Saturday, April 22, a citywide cleanup will take place beginning at 9:00 a.m. at Trailhead Park to receive instructions and supplies culminating in a picnic at noon at Pitt Karen Park. Now therefore, I, George Shepherd, the mayor of the city of Tegucay, do hereby proclaim April 17 to the 22nd, 2017 as Spring Pick Me Up Week in this community, and I call upon all residents to join in the efforts of city staff to volunteer, in the efforts of city staff to volunteer to support the Spring Pick Me Up this week. Now we're going to move on to item number 2, which is the Joint Public Hearing with the Planning Commission, so if the Planning Commission would come up. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I need you to sign. Should have had the minute to undress.
It could be dangerous.
Get your hands in there, Charlie.
Easy now. Alright, somebody stand in front of me as I get undressed here. Yeah. Okay.
Jerry, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing part of the meeting. We do have a quorum, missing only Chris Leonard and Doug Burns, and I don't know how many people signed up, but I think after each item, we'll give you a chance to come up and talk or make your comments. So right now, we'll start out with the first one, item A, Amendment to Ordinance 77, Section 19167, accessory use, and 19206.6, private radio and television antenna and satellite reception equipment. Did they get flip-flopped?
Okay.
Alright, we'll start out with the amendment. Do we still have item A on the...
It will be C.
It will be C. It will be the last, okay, so strike that.
It's not quite the last, but...
Alright, strike that.
Somebody give him a minute. Jerry.
Jerry, right behind you.
Yeah. Oh, I got this one.
You have a new one?
Is this the one you're talking about?
Okay, let's start over. Anyway, we're going to start out with item A, Amendment to Cadence Planning Development District, and add TMS #644-00-00-046 and rezonate from RUD in the county to PDD in the city. Okay. I think, Susan, you want to come up and tell us about this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of Planning Commission and council, sorry. The applicant's proposing to rezonate approximately 2.29 acres along Dam and Gardendale roads and annex the parcel as an amendment to the Cadence Plan Development District. Users proposed for the additional property or open space are an amenity area for the residential portion of the current development. The PDD development standards include specific language pertaining to the restrictive nature of these uses for this parcel. The addition of this parcel to the PDD will also enhance the protection of the existing green space and the streetscape. Should this parcel not be annexed and added to the Cadence PDD, residential construction would be permitted under the existing county zoning. In addition, should Gardendale Road and Dam Road be approved for widening and the intersection realigned as a future Pennies for Progress project, the developer will agree to assist with the necessary right of way for this parcel. The subject property is in an area identified in the 2015-2025 Comprehensive Plan and future land use map as containing a mix of residential, government, institutional, and recreational uses that integrate flexible design standards compatible with the principles that were outlined in the plan. The proposed use of the property is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and that it will protect open space and environmentally sensitive areas and will provide recreational space for the adjacent residential community. We had a good discussion at the regular Planning Commission meeting last week. I believe the developer addressed all of your questions to your satisfaction at that meeting. However, the developer's engineer is in attendance should you have any additional questions to ask. Based on the staff analysis and discussion with the Planning Commission, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, I guess I'll open it up for public comments. Did anybody sign up for this one? Okay. Alright, there being no public comments, council, comments?
I have a comment. This land is going to remain undeveloped or is there a plan on being a park of some kind or what? It looks like it's just going to remain, what, a field or a park or what?
I can address that for you, Mr. Ruddy. I can address that for you. Based on the proposed change to the site standards, right now it's a vacant field. The developer has requested to either keep it as open space or maybe even add a passive amenity for that specific community, like a bocce ball court, walking track, flower garden, things of that nature. But it will not, cannot be developed, if council does move forward with annexation, cannot be developed for residential or anything else. But we did get them to agree to work with SEDOT, if pennies, like a Pennies for Progress project in the future, or the state does realign the intersection, widen that portion of the road or something like that, that they would work with them on dedicating the necessary right of way for that project.
So just for clarification, Charlie, if it comes into the city, it will remain as passive and green space?
Green space or amenity, yes, sir.
If it remains where it is in the county, it potentially could be developed?
Yes, sir. You could have residential construction on it based on the current county zoning, yes, sir, of RUD.
Thank you.
And what changed from the original PDD being passed? Was this parcel not for sale at that point or was it...
Correct. The developer did not have that parcel under contract and was able to acquire that parcel after they had come through, and now wishes to add that on and really make it a nice welcome into that area, into his new community.
And Charlie, regarding the intersection right of way, they agreeing to assist with necessary if that were to occur, what exactly does that mean? Financially, to assist with it?
If it's, it's my understanding that if it is the state or a county project like Pennies for Progress, they would dedicate the necessary right of way that they would need, as you can see somewhat depicted on the screen there. Now, if it's a private developer across the street or something like that, they're agreeing to work with them. So if it's a public project, then the developer has expressed that they would dedicate that right of way to them.
Okay, because I didn't see any mention of this particular portion later on in the ordinance down further in the agenda.
It's in the PDD site standards.
Okay, fantastic.
It's specified, it is specific to that language, Miss Ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Susan.
I think that's it, Jerry.
Okay. Open up for commissioners' comments? No comments? I did, did you point out that the road realignment was going to happen there? That makes sense to come in at 90 degrees angle, too, so. There being no more comments, we'll move on to the next section, okay? Alright, item B.
Jerry, you're going to do public comments as well or just...
Yeah, I just did it. I did those first.
Okay, alright, I'm sorry, I missed it.
I'm not, I wasn't sure of which item to choose. I think this might be one that I want to speak on.
Okay.
Is that your name and address, please?
My name is Wanda Collins. I'm near the 2155 Dam Road, and I'm speaking on my behalf of everybody that lives in that area. You were speaking of widening that section there, and...
Not part of this project. There's no road widening planned at this point in time that we're aware of.
Okay, well, that's my question, because I need to know who came on my property and put stakes down saying that it was for the widening of, I wasn't there. They said it was for the widening of the road, and I have contacted the county, the state, the Department of Transportation, and nobody knows what's going on. I'd like to know who it was, who did this. Because I was under the impression that I needed to be notified, you know, when this...
I would think so.
Yes.
But at this, but we don't know who it is either, do we?
At this point in time, ma'am, I can tell you that we don't, we're not aware of any road widening projects, but if you can make sure that we have your contact information, if you can leave it with our municipal clerk, we'll do some research and be happy to get back with you on it, because we're not aware of any road widening project scheduled for Dam Road or Gardendale Road at this time.
Okay. They have an answer to that?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more comments? Okay. Moving on to section B, rezoning approximately plus or minus 38.13 acres, tax map number 644-01-01-030, and also 31 in that, in that numeral order, and 644-01-01-344, from B1 and B2 to PDD game on. Susan, want to come up? Tell us about this one.
The parcels, as you listed, were included in the original rezoning of the game on Plan Development District that was approved on August 1, 2016. A clause in that ordinance stated that the applicant had a number of days in which to close...
It will be C. It will be the last, okay, so strike that. All right, strike that.
Jerry, right behind you.
Yeah. Oh, I got, I got this one. Is this the one you're talking about?
Okay, let's start over. Anyway, we're gonna start out with item A, Amendment to Cadence Planning Development District, and add TMS number 644-00-00-046 and rezonate from RUD in the county to PDD in the city. Okay. I think, Susan, you wanna come up and tell us about this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of Planning Commission and Council, sorry. The applicant's proposing to rezonate approximately 2.29 acres along Dam and Gardendale Roads and annex the parcel as an amendment to the Cadence Plan Development District. Uses proposed for the additional property or open space are an amenity area for the residential portion of the current development. The PDD development standards include specific language pertaining to the restrictive nature of these uses for this parcel. The addition of this parcel to the PDD will also enhance the protection of the existing green space and the streetscape. Should this parcel not be annexed and added to the Cadence PDD, residential construction would be permitted under the existing county zoning. In addition, should Gardendale Road and Dam Road be approved for widening and the intersection realigned as a future Pennies for Progress project, the developer will agree to assist with the necessary right of way for this parcel. The subject property is in an area identified in the 2015-2025 Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map as containing a mix of residential, government, institutional, and recreational uses that integrate flexible design standards compatible with the principles that were outlined in the plan. The proposed use of the property is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and that it will protect open space and environmentally sensitive areas and will provide recreational space for the adjacent residential community. We had a good discussion at the regular Planning Commission meeting last week. I believe the developer addressed all of your questions to your satisfaction at that meeting. However, the developer's engineer is in attendance should you have any additional questions to ask. Based on the staff analysis and discussion with the Planning Commission, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, I guess I'll open it up for public comments. Did anybody sign up for this one? Okay. Thank you. All right, there being no public comments, council, comments?
I have a comment. This land is gonna be, remain undeveloped, or is this planned on being a park of some kind, or what? It just looks like it's just gonna remain, what, a field, or a park, or what?
I can address that for you, Mr. R, Mr. R, I can address that for you. Based on the proposed change to the site standards, right now it's a vacant field. The developer has requested to either keep it as open space, or maybe even add a passive amenity for that specific community, like a bocce ball court, walking track, flower garden, things of that nature. But it will not, cannot be developed, if council does move forward with annexation, cannot be developed for residential or anything else. But it, we did get them to agree to work with SEDOT, if pennies, like a Pennies for Progress project in the future, or the state does realign the intersection, widen that portion of the road, or something like that, that they would work with them on dedicating the necessary right of way for that project.
So just for clarification, Charlie, if it comes into the city, it will remain as passive and green space?
Green space or an amenity, yes, sir.
If it remains where it is in the county, it potentially could be developed.
Yes, sir, you could have residential construction on it based on the current county zoning, yes, sir, of RUD.
Thank you.
And what changed from the original PDD being passed? What, was this parcel not for sale at that point, or was it?
Correct, the developer did not have that parcel under contract and was able to acquire that parcel after they had come through, and now wishes to add that on and really make it a nice, a nice welcome into that, that area, into his, into his new community.
And Charlie, regarding the intersection right of way, they agreeing to assist with necessary if that were to occur, what exactly does that mean? Financially?
If it's, if it's, it's my understanding that if it is the state or a county project like Pennies for Progress, they would dedicate the necessary right of way that they would need, as you can see somewhat depicted on the screen there. Now, if it's a private developer across the street or something like that, they're agreeing to work with them. So if it's, if it's a public project, then there, the developer has, has expressed that they would dedicate that right of way to them.
Okay, 'cause I didn't see any mention of this particular portion later on in the ordinance down further in the agenda.
It's in the PDD site standards.
Okay, fantastic.
It's specified, it is specific to that language, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Susan.
I think that's it, Jerry.
Okay. Open up for commissioners' comments? No comments? I, I did, did, did you point out that the road realignment was gonna happen there? That makes sense to come in at ninety degrees angle, too, so. There being no more comments, we'll move on to the next section, okay? All right, item B.
Jerry, you gonna do public comments as well, or just?
Yeah, I just did, I did those first.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I missed it.
I'm not, I wouldn't be sure of which item to choose. I think this might be one that I'm willing to speak on.
Okay.
Is that your name and address, please?
My name is Wanda Collins. I live at 2155 Dam Road. And I'm speaking on my behalf of everybody that lives in that area. You were speaking of widening that section there, and?
Not part of this project. There, there's, there's no road widening planned at this point in time that we're aware of.
Okay, well, that's my question, because I need to know who came on my property and put stakes down saying that it was for the widening of, I wasn't there. They said it was for the widening of the road, and I have contacted the county, the state, the Department of Transportation, and nobody knows what's going on. I'd like to know who it was, who did this. Because I was under the impression that I needed to be notified, you know, when this...
I would think so.
Yes.
But, but at this, but we don't, we don't know who it is either, do we?
At, at this point in time, ma'am, I can tell you that we don't, we're not aware of any road widening projects, but if you can make sure that we have your contact information, if you can leave it with our municipal clerk, we'll, we'll do some research and be happy to get back with you on it, 'cause we're not aware of any road widening project scheduled for Dam Road or Gardendale Road at this time. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you. Is there any more comments? Okay. Moving on to section B. Rezoning approximately plus or minus thirty-eight point one-three acres, tax map number 644-01-01-030, and also thirty-one in that, in that number order, and 644-01-01-344, from B1 and B2 to PDD game on. Susan, wanna come up? Tell us about this one.
The parcels, as you listed, were included in the original rezoning of the game on Plan Development District that was approved on August 1st, 2016. A clause in that ordinance stated that the applicant had a number of days in which to close and transfer title, and all the properties of the annexation and zoning would be nullified. The original hundred and twenty days came close to passing, the applicant asked for an amendment to the ordinance to extend the deadline for another ninety days, and that was approved on November 30th, 2014. Well, the applicant has been able to obtain ownership of forty-eight point zero-three of the original properties of the PDD. Out of the landowners' four parcels...
Excuse me, excuse me, Susan?
Yes.
That's 2015, not 2014, correct? November 30th, 2015?
2016.
Sixteen, okay. Sixteen, you said fourteen, okay.
So sorry, it's 2016. The applicant has been able to obtain ownership of forty-eight point oh-three of the original properties. However, the landowners' four parcels have not yet agreed to contract terms with the applicant, so the applicant's now requesting to not include those properties as part of the PDD at this time. However, he is continuing to have discussions with those parcels, but I believe that the applicant is, is under some contractual obligations to try to move forward on the, the parcels already under his ownership. And because he was not able to obtain those four parcels, the original PDD became nullified. So a new application for annexation and rezoning of the properties that are already owned by Prestige Worldwide has now been submitted. The applicant is still proposing to annex and rezonate approximately ten acres on Dam Road, and then rezonate the thirty-eight point oh-three acres between Dam Road and Stonecrest Boulevard for a total of forty-eight point oh-three acres as part of the Plan Development District. The uses proposed in the PDD are a mix of commercial, retail, office, entertainment, athletic, institutional, and residential types and densities. And specific uses, of course, are the two-level sports facility, the theater complex, parking garage, the park, offices, general retail, commercial, and a mix of residential, including upper-floor boutique apartments over retail space. The subject property is in an area identified in the 2015-2025 Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map as an entertainment and activity district. The intended this district is to provide opportunities and incentives to create and promote environments that are conducive to cultural and social engagement. Vertical mixed uses should be committed in the multi-level buildings with ground-floor restaurant and entertainment being used with the upscale apartments or office suites located on the upper floors. Typical uses is outlined in the Comprehensive Plan are parks and athletic facilities, theater facilities, social retailing uses, office hospitality, and mixed residential. In addition, the district outlines a street concept that encourages connectivity between the uses and the link between Dam Road and Stonecrest Boulevard. The uses proposed in the rezoning of these parcels is consistent with the entertainment and activity district as outlined in the Comprehensive Plan, therefore, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, I'll open up for public comments. On game on, yes.
I, I need you to state your name and address again, I'm sorry.
Wanda Collins, 2155 Dam Road.
Good enough.
I'm good, all right. Whenever this does start taking place, you know, when they start all this, when they do that, I don't, you know, my concern is, are they going to try to fill this land in where they have the road coming in on Dam Road? The, the first section here going back out towards the highway?
Fill in as...
Are they gonna try to fill it in, or try to level it off? Because they'll have to put in...
You're talking about from topography standpoint, from a, fill in the gullies? Is that what you're referring to, fill in? We have not received grading plans a, as of yet.
No permits or anything have been planned?
That is correct.
The storm, the runoff and stuff is one of my main concerns.
Yes, ma'am.
Going into the wetland that is not listed there, but is designated on there.
There, there are several creeks and streams to there that they will have to stay out of or manage appropriately through following SEDHEC best management practices, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, council comments?
Oh, I think there was one more.
Oh, we have one more.
Yeah, we need to get you on recording and...
It's for the people watching at home.
You know.
So they could hear you.
My name's Teresa Pope with the property on 2283 Dam Road. I am part owner with my mom there. I actually live in North Carolina, but I'm part owner with her. This is my sister-in-law, Jean Dees, who also is one of the parcels that they're speaking of, the four owners, that is not negotiating the contract. I just thought that it would be very important to let you know, because in the future, if something changes, that there's another buyer that comes in, that we have been willing to close on this property. We have been waiting, we've been on the roller coaster. My mom and I have actually went and signed the contracts to close on this property. Bottom line, Brad and them are out of money. They have asked us to be the bank and finance the property. I just want council to understand that, that if Brad and them doesn't come and purchase our property, that there's no thinking that we did not want to cooperate with Tika K and with Bradley and everyone else to be a part of this game on. And that's been the process that I can speak of, three parcel owners there, and that's my family members there.
Thank you.
And I'm at the 1177, we're right beside Miller's. Bradley has, I think as of today, we've had like ten closing dates in the past year. So it's like to reiterate what she said, it's not that we are not cooperating, which is what it sounds like they're saying about us, we cannot get any answers ourselves. They tell us one thing and then come back the next day and say another thing, come back the next day and say another thing. So just to let you know, it is not us that is holding out. They, they've just told us they're flat out of money, and they are in breach of contract at this point with one of the landowners, and they're having trouble getting their money. So just to let you know, it is not us four, 'cause we've been willing, we've been on the roller coaster ride longer than her mom, we've been on it for over a year now, and so just to let you know, it is not us, it's Bradley that's doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
We have one more?
Do we have, okay.
I'm Jim Engersloo, live on 668 Reliance Court, so just off of Serenity Point, as part of Serenity Point. So I guess the question I had from a, from a planning standpoint, that road, Stonecrest, there's a go-through Serenity Point, has any consideration been given to traffic flows through there on all those, those houses that are gonna be on that? As I see the road right now, there's gonna be quite a lot of traffic going right across those front driveways. Has there been any thought about how you would reroute that traffic or make that a side road or something? The answer...
I, I know traffic was addressed the first time this came through our council.
A, a traffic impact analysis has been done for those development, yes.
Yeah, just curious, is there any way I can see copies of what that plan was?
Absolutely, if, if you can reach out to Susan Britt, our Planning and Development Manager, via email, she can get you a copy of it, yes, sir.
Is Susan Britt's the one back here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, now hand it over to council for comments.
David, you wanna start? Ryan, you wanna start? Ken?
Okay. Well, I see that one of the villages or two are no longer included, so I was trying to find out a new timeline, because I believe that the hotel portion was going to be one of the first portions to be constructed. So now that that appears to be off the table for the time being, what will the first groundbreaking portions be, and what is our timeline?
I can tell you that through conversations with the development partners, they are looking to finalize contracts on the sale of Village E. So more than likely, Village A and Village E will be your first two as far as groundbreaking and development, and then moving over into Village D and C later. I know they've been actively working on their plans, on their engineering plans. We have not had submittals yet, but have had multiple conversations with Kim Lee Horn, who's the engineer for the site. At one point, they were talking about doing it in, in, obviously, they will be doing it in phases, but looking to subdivide into three minor subdivisions, all still part of this PDD, so they would all be held to the exact same standards. Your game on the recreational development side, as well as your residential portions, will be the first to go in, and then your commercial areas coming in after that. As far as timeline, I would suspect probably later this summer, breaking ground. It really just depend on the permitting process and when we get the plans.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Charlie.
Trying to formulate my thought, give me a second, please, I'm getting older. I like the project, I really do. I think it's a good project, I think it's something that would be beneficial to the city of Tika K. I'm, I'm very concerned at the comments from the two ladies that stood up at the podium. What, what road are we as a city going down? Where potentially we're annexing property into the city, and then this doesn't happen? And the property's in the city? And then we have to deal with the fallout of what's happening? I was just speaking with council member O'Neill, and I don't mean to put words in his mouth, but he said Brad was here at the Planning Commission meeting last week, and hats, horns, and unicorns, everything's great, everything's happening, everything's wonderful. And I guess I'm hearing the same thing is being told to the, the owners of the property, you know, everything's wonderful, everything's great, and then ten closing dates? You know, that, that gives me a lot of concern and a lot of pause, and I think I would like to have Brad come here in potentially a workshop setting with council and explain exactly what's gonna happen, where the, the financial wherewithal is, because I'm very concerned that we're headed down a road that he's not gonna be able to fulfill what he, he, he thinks he's gonna fulfill. So that's my, my comments, since I'm allowed to make them. Jerry, it's back to you.
Well, I would have to agree, but it's unfortunate that he is not here to be able to speak to whatever it is. I spoke with him last week, and all this stuff is hearsay. So unfortunately, he did speak with me...
It's all hearsay, but all of the people who own the property down Dam Road now have "For Sale by Owner" signs on their, on their property.
And I don't wanna go into the discussions that he did tell me about some of the owners, so that's why I think this would be very wise for us to have him here to be able to speak in person, and those particular owners to be here as well, so that they could speak up.
Ma'am, we, we're just having a conversation here, we'll let you know when that all happens. Your microphone's down there, is not on. I, I think I'd like to, you know, when we get down to that...
Table the other...
Part of it. Table that item. I'm, I'm, I'm really concerned. Where are we going? And I realize that we shouldn't be concerned about whether or not he has the money or not, that's not our, that's not our role here. We're annexing property, and we've done this already for him. He needed an extension, we did it, we had a special meeting for him again with, with, you know, council came back together and did an extension for him. How many more extensions are we going to need?
This one won't need anyone, because he secured all the properties, but he would have to come back to us for all the rest of them if he were to negotiate and secure those properties, to expand, to have the full capacity of what he first brought to the city.
Any other council comments? Jerry, you're, it's your meeting.
Yeah, I think it'll be appropriate, come on.
One of the follow-up, Jim Engersloo with 668 Reliance Court again, anyway. No, I, I remember looking at the plan originally after the first council session, and I was looking at throughways in terms of accessibility, and when I look at the new plan here, which being proposed, it looks like the access is more heavily on the Stonecrest side and not the Dam Road side, when I look at the way this particular plan is laid out. Again, I'm just going back to thinking through the whole problem, much like you guys are, what are all the different things that have to kinda come into play, but any changes to the plat that I see here, it looks like it would very definitely have a different impact on traffic than whatever was proposed previously.
Thank you.
I think it's important to note, mayor, this isn't a plat, it's just a site plan and road paths, road layouts, things like that, none of that has been determined at this point.
Okay. Any commissioner comments?
I'm a little bit concerned that we're talking about Village E, in other words, adding more residential, when what we need is the commercial. That wasn't brought up. If that is the case, and like, like she said, it is hearsay, but that, that's definitely a concern of mine. We didn't... Everything was lovely at our meeting, and I think it's a good idea to figure out what's going on.
Okay.
I just wanna underscore that it sounds like not all the facts are well-known, and I'm very interested in getting all the facts. I think it's been very useful to hear some of the, you know, additional comments that we've had this evening. On the other hand, I don't think it's, we should jump to completely criticizing the project altogether, because most of the projects that we see introduced here in Tika K, at least over my tenure, have no commercial interests. So while it may not be as good as it was in the past, it certainly is, it does provide value from that perspective.
Thank you, Vincent, thank you, Arnold. Yeah, I agree that commercial is important, and this, this does have a commercial aspect that was very intriguing, very interesting, and, and the other night at the meeting, that was what we talked about mostly. We do have residential in this area, like Villa Jeff, but, you know, getting the commercial going, I think that was what was going to be happening first supposedly. So definitely, it sounds like we need some more discussion on this. Any other comments? All right, there, there being none, I have a question about seed, if, we'll, we'll continue to go through this, but when we take it up back after the meeting, then we can discuss whether or not we bring it back to council, okay? All right. We'll go ahead and go to C. Are we going annex? Did you introduce them together, Susan?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. We'll go to D. Proposal, proposed changes to Ordinance 77, Section 19167, accessory uses, and 19206-6, private radio and television antennas and satellite reception equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ordinance 77, which is our zoning code, currently has private satellite and antennas listed with their special use permits, which is set... under special use permits, which is section 19-206.6, which is approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. This was done originally due to the size of satellite dishes when they were huge. So, this has been in the ordinance for a very long time. We believe that, that the commission and staff believe that these should be listed under accessory uses, as the technology has changed, and such uses should be approved administratively, rather than as a special use permit. All other local jurisdictions have these listed as accessory uses. In addition, we've recently seen an uptick in requests for solar installations, and our current ordinance is really silent on this issue. So, therefore, an amendment's being proposed to regulate the location and installation of such features as accessory uses. In addition, the changes are being proposed to add some new definitions regarding solar installations. The proposed changes under accessory uses for solar installations are regulations pertaining to roof-mounted installations, to include things such as location, orientation, height, use of building integrated components, such as solar shingles, emergency access and building code compliance, and then also use of a non-reflective exterior surface. The other changes are regulations pertaining to ground-mounted installations to include location, orientation, height setbacks, use of neutral framework, screening, safety fencing, and also the use of non-reflective exterior surfaces. And we'll be glad to answer any questions once we receive public hearing.
Thank you, Susan. Are there any public comments? Nobody wants solar in your yard? All right. Counsel comments?
Yeah, I have one. Are there any grandfather clauses in on this? If people already have something, will it be automatically disapproved now?
No. It's grandfathered in.
I've got several questions.
Yeah, I've got a lot.
Go ahead, Ryan.
My thought is it's, I mean, I'm not a huge proponent of more and more government regulation, number one, but I don't feel the city's in a position to play HOA versus the city of T G K. And so, while we should possibly have some restrictions or focuses to ensure the city stays beautiful, I don't know if it's government's job to enforce or set these regulations in play specifically to the type of panel, or it has to be a, I don't know, I think it's a bit over the top, is the way I feel about the overall wording and verbiage of the changes to the ordinance.
I have to agree. I mean, safety screening, if it's in the rear, I mean, that's just like me saying, you know, you're going to have to regulate all the trampolines and put safety screening underneath, or make sure you've got a web netting. I don't even know how you're going to reinforce. I like the idea of having some sort of conformity, because I'm sure there could be something bad out there, that it could maybe reduce the value of some properties around if it was turned into a major solar field next door. But I'm a little concerned with us saying this is solar, but now, all of a sudden, we're sticking in here, radio antennas, standard television antennas, satellite reception equipment. Are we doing solar, or are we just trying to put something else in here at the same time? I really don't like that. And I passed five satellite dishes on the way here that would be considered legal. So, how are we going to now regulate these that are in the front yard, too close, too high? I'm not really sure how we're going to do that. So, I don't see that we need to be regulating all these things.
Couple of questions. We're going to the antennas first. It says that, you know, you have to have your dish in the backyard, unintrusive as possible, located in the rear or side yards. What happens if you can't get a signal in the rear or side yard? Your only signal could be in the front yard. You know, so, does that mean that that person cannot have dish, or satellite, or any other, any kind of TV? Because, or are we forcing them into, you know, what we currently have? Do you have an answer on that one?
I did want to address that. Everything that does with satellite, with a satellite and antennas is already in your ordinance.
Okay. So, why are we doing this now?
Because we're moving it to accessory uses, out of where those could be approved administratively, and the resident then does not have to pay a $350 fee and go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to be granted a special exception-
Okay, so the fact that these were already in our ordinance-
That's correct.
Okay, and we're changing it to an accessory-
Accessory use, so that they can be approved administratively.
That would have been helpful to know, because it's shown in red, and normally, red means it's new information. It's a change.
It's new in that section. I thought that we'd covered that in the cover sheets, addressed that it already exists, which is 206.6. That's the existing section.
All right. And then go into solar panels. I have an A-frame house. I don't have a roof in the back of my house. Where do I put my solar panels?
You could do a ground-mounted solar panel.
That's more expensive.
But that would be up to the solar company. That would be, that would be the ones who dictate whether-
So, if I go with my A-frame house, and I want to put solar panels on my house, you're telling me I can't do it?
Wouldn't be me. That would, that would be your solar company.
Well, I saw some yards, even driving here, that their rear yard actually faces the street. So, we're going to have to really create a lot of stipulations and clauses, I guess, to allow those people, who their backyard is along a street, which is the front yard, for your view.
I just think having staff driving around looking for satellite dishes and solar panels on the wrong side of the house is a complete waste of time.
I almost feel like, at this point, knowing that this actually exists, this needs to be clarified or removed, out of satellite dishes and antennas.
Well, does the satellite dishes, is that addressed in the ordinance that we currently have? Or are we moving it? So-
They are, satellites and antennas are currently addressed as a, as a special use permit, and we're simply moving that so you can be in accessory use, and staff could permit it administratively, and they wouldn't have to-
So, it is in the ordinance-
Yes, sir.
As a special use permit?
Yes, sir.
Because I'm getting head shaking up and down, saying, no, I'm getting head shaking left and right for no.
For satellites, not solar. Satellite dishes and-
I'm talking solar right now.
No, sir. Solar is not addressed.
Okay, so, Susan, here's my question, Susan. Okay, you present to council in red form what you want changed in regards to satellites, okay? And then, in red form, you present to council what you want in regards to satellite, into solar. How are we supposed to determine what's there and what's not there? So, you're asking us to add solar panels in?
Yes, sir.
And you're asking us just to move satellite?
That's correct.
That's as clear as mud.
Well, I get it now, but it actually makes me want to now modify this ordinance and take this out, because it is unenforceable, and I am sure that the five houses I saw this at, they didn't take any type of variance out.
That's my, how many DirecTV or Dish Network installers have recommended, it's going to cost you 300 bucks to get this installed so you get a signal?
Right.
Zero.
The issue we have with solar panels is they require a building permit, and without something that regulates location of that, we have had incidents where a huge solar array was placed at the end of a street, and we had nothing to address it, and the neighborhood was not very happy with it.
Like a ground-mounted?
Yes, sir. The safety fencing is required under building codes. We're just stressing that it would have to be, safety fencing would have to be considered as part of the screening.
What's that?
Where is this neighborhood that someone put solar panels in their front yard, and now it's-
It's at the end of a cul-de-sac.
You know, I think we're going down a really bad road here, because on our street, well, actually, the street beside ours, there's a shed in a front yard, okay? That apparently is totally illegal here. So, where are we going to start or stop regulating what people do in their front yards?
Actually, sheds are not permitted in front yards.
Okay, well, I'm just, all right, go down Triton. It's been complained about before, so apparently, the city already got calls about that.
It's your meeting, Jerry. Go for it.
You know what I'm saying? You really fill the comment section up. Okay. Abby, is that it?
I think that's it for now.
All right. Commissioner's comments?
I think when, you know, when we go back and discuss this further, we have to try to clarify the comments regarding the level of ordinances versus the penalties for not following the ordinances and the potential cost for the city to engage in any of this activity. I think part of the problem is the ordinances that are already on the books haven't been followed. So, there's some question about, is anybody going to follow the new ones? And is it worth our time and energy, you know, to spend on, in this regard? That's what seems like it's on the table.
Okay.
Thank you. And just for clarification purposes, the antenna section, and we talked about this pretty extensively in our, in our meeting, if you ride around T G K, you won't see any outside antennas, and that's because they didn't allow them. They, you had to put them in the roof at one time. What we're doing was going to now allow some antennas to be pushed, you know, mounted on the outside of the home, go up a certain level, right? The satellite dish part was basically from when satellite dishes were 12-foot. And so, this was kind of held over from that. Nobody liked the 12-foot satellite dish. You remember when they used to sell outdoor patio tables? Had a, looked like an umbrella, but it was a satellite dish. Nobody wanted to see that stuff. So, that's where some of this comes from. They were wanting to modernize it a little bit, to encompass, to, you know, include new antennas, for whatever reason. We talked about ham radio as well. And for the smaller satellites, which most everyone has on their house. Now, for the, for the solar panels, there were several issues that we discussed. One of them was glaring off of it into someone else's house when the sun hits it at a certain angle. My mom lives near a solar farm, and so, all those things had to be taken into consideration. So, if someone puts one in their yard, they need to be considerate of their neighbors whenever they put it in, to make sure the glare doesn't get right in the windows, or get in the road where somebody's driving. The other part is, there is a large amount of electricity can be produced by these things, and so, it could be dangerous if somebody doesn't have some screening around it, or some kind of protection to keep people from wandering over there where it is. And then, the final part that we discussed was, was someone saying, okay, my whole backyard, I'm just going to put solar panels back there and sell it back to the electric company. And that's something that we discussed that may or may not be a good idea. I don't like the idea of telling people what they can do, but if you don't at least put some kind of guidelines in there, people are going to do everything they can do. And so, that's where some of this discussion came from. Of course, it could be maybe better defined in that respect, but that was part of our discussions, if that helps you any. Okay? All right. If there's nothing else, I think we can take a motion to close the public hearing section. All right. Motion, we have a second.
All in favor, say aye. All right.
Thanks, Jerry. Thank you, guys. Item number three on the agenda is public comments. Are there any additional public comments?
Thanks, the meeting's over.
Yes.
Hearing none, we'll close the public comments. We'll move on to item, well, before we go on to item number four, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda under executive session. I wrote it down what I wanted to do, but now I can't find it. A motion to go into executive session, or a motion contractual matters related to York Electric franchise fees. That is my motion to add to the agenda at the end. Can I get a second on that motion? Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any discussion? There being none, call a question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Item number four on the agenda is a regular, minutes for the regular city council meeting of February 21st. Council, any questions or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number five on the agenda is the forever, T G K Forever Foundation Board, and that is City Manager Charlie Funderbur.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have provided in your council packets all the applicants, all the applications that we received at City Hall. I can, I would like to say, very, very impressed with the, with the talent. Not surprised, but very impressed. You know, filled with people that, you know, some have volunteered before, a lot of them haven't volunteered with the city before, have a passion to do this, and extremely, extremely talented. If those folks are watching or viewing this later, I told them when we talked, when we met with them over the last two weeks, but I'd like to say again, thank you so much. Just to see their passion for what they do and wanting to lend their expertise to the city, and specifically, the foundation, was very tremendous. Mayor, I can either go through the names, if you like, can turn it over to you guys for discussion. How would, how would you like to proceed forward?
Would you just announce who the names are?
Yes, sir.
Based on your executive summary, would you give just that background, read the executive summary on this?
Be glad to. The seven people that Joey Bluth and myself would like to recommend to council, and the names are just in alphabetical order. Amy McKinney. Amy lives here in T G K and is a professional, basically, in her words, a professional fundraiser for St. Jude's Children's Hospital. Anthony Ruffalo, who council has met before, or previously. Anthony lives in the Lakewood community, is a financial planner, and has served both on the boards, as well as just volunteering his time, several other foundations in the Charlotte area. Brunella Belmonte Fisk. Brunella is also lives in Lakewood. She is a CPA, she's, has her MBA and is principal at Belmonte Fisk Business Solutions, and the former CFO of Incentient Incorporated. Jamie LaRose, new resident in the Lake Shore neighborhood, or subdivision, is Vice President of Digital Experience and Lead Management Leader for Wells Fargo. Joe Butterworth, longtime resident of T G K, lives in traditional T G K. She's a former Winthrop University English professor. She's a published author, currently a residential realtor and broker, and she also helped form a foundation to create a charter school, the Brevard Academy, and has a lot of successful grant-writing experience. Chris Johnson, also lives in Lake Shore. He's marked, strong marketing and sales background, did a lot of work with Hendrick Motorsports, responsible for bringing some of the title sponsors to those teams like UPS and things like that. So, he's very familiar with Fortune 500 companies and dealing with them. And then Suzanne Chapel. Suzanne's a new resident, lives in Amber Woods, and one of our recent Citizens Academy graduates. Suzanne comes to us from Conyers, Georgia, where she served on several nonprofit boards as Director of Development and as Executive Director. A lot of nonprofit board experience, a lot of information, a lot of, just brings a lot to the table there. Very enjoyable speaking with her. Lot of resources that she's obtained over- Lot of resources that she's obtained over the years that, for board trainings and, and things of that nature, specific to nonprofits, so. And then again, a lot of, has successfully written a lot of grants. Her, even though she's done some federal and state, her biggest ones that she really enjoys are the private and corporate foundation grants that she's gone after and been able to tap into, so. We had, we had several others, a few others that we talked to, and we think that there, there may be a fit in the future for, you know, perhaps some subcommittees that may spur, you know, be created under the foundation, but these were the seven that we felt really brought the most to the table, and we're happy to recommend those to council for approval.
Any questions from council in regards to any of them?
No.
Perfect. Like to make a motion to approve, I'm sorry.
I just like the idea that those other persons, because I thought they, some of them really shined in different areas. I love how they'll be able to be, and anyone else who has, did not apply. Let's get your name in the hat so that when this committee is going forward, they have more people to pull on and more expertise. Sorry.
Good job. Motion to approve Anne McKinney, Anthony Raffalo, Brunella, Belante Fisk, Jamie LaRose, Joe Butterworth, Chris Johnson, Suzanne Chapel, to the board of the TK Forever Foundation as Board of Directors, and assigning the City Manager, Charlie Funderburk, and the Parks and Rec Director, Joey Bledin, as staff members, and Jennifer Stalford and myself as the council liaisons to the foundation. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations, we now have that going.
That's awesome.
Item number six is the Planning Commission Recommendation. Susan Britt, since they're not here, I'd like to entertain a recess for five minutes, so that they can get their recommendation and come back to us. So make the motion for recess for five minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David O'Neil. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
You alright? Call the meeting to our council is back in session. We can move on to item number 6A, which is the Planning Commission Recommendation regarding the public hearing on the two items discussed, item number two. Susan Britt.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. On the, consider the recommendation to amend the Cadence Plan Development District to add TMS 644-0000-046 and rezone it from RUD in the county to PDD in the city. The motion was to recommend approval of first reading and for the voting by the board. We had five members present, four voted yes and one nay.
Yes. Yes, please.
On the recommendation to rezone tax map number 644-0000-27, 644-0101-030, and 644-0101-031 from B1 in the city, and 644-0101-344 from B2 in the city to PDD in the city. The Planning Commission recommend deferral on this action at this time until further information has, can be received from the developer as indicated by council.
Susan, in your, in your recommendation, you mentioned a tax map number that ended in 27. I don't have that on my sheet here.
C. That's, that's the annexation.
Oh, okay, so we're going, that's D, okay, alright.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. So you're, you're recommending that-
I just did it all together.
So the Planning Commission is recommending that we table item number six, C and six D?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright.
Consider recommendation to amend Ordinance 77, Section 19167 accessory uses, and 19206.6, private radio and television antennas and satellite reception equipment. The recommendation was to, was to, for council to move forward with first reading only for, to move Section 19-206.6 to 19167 with the revision as proposed. Differ action on the solar panels, adding solar panels to 19167 until further direction can be received from council.
Okay. Thanks, Susan. Counsel, I think that we have the recommendation with the Planning Commission to table item number six, C, six D, and part of six E. In my mind, I'm inclined to table the whole thing, but that's my mind. So I will entertain a motion to do that if you wish.
Is there any discussion first, or I don't know?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, yeah.
I mean, just for, and it's my humble opinion, just from a business perspective, and when it comes to the game on and the, the changes that we've had as far as for the, what he's showing us now. I don't know if it's our job to test his finances or check his finances, or, we're not checking bank statements with developers. What we're doing is we're allowing developers to move forward with an idea that was very well received by the city. Has that changed now? Yes, it's smaller. Does it affect the, the overall outcome? We, we're not supposed to listen to he said, she said, well so-and-so's broke, so-and-so did that. It's changed, in my opinion, if, if I'm a developer, which I'm not, so I could be completely off, but from a business perspective, if I have the opportunity to develop a smaller portion to gain capital from investors, from people that are trying to build or do something with the smaller portions that I'm building on, then that gives me working capital to build or buy additional property, or build, you know, begin the process of this, this two, three-story facility, whatever it may be, by moving forward sooner, not later. It doesn't necessarily mean I need to spend $40 million on all the property to get the, to get the project done. If, if, if I could get away by spending 20, but then get a capital coming in from those other people that are part of the project, then that makes complete sense to me. It doesn't necessarily mean that, in my opinion, that we should table it and push this back, because his finances aren't necessarily our business. If he's moving forward and doing what we discussed in the first place, it's just the size of the, the project has changed, not the scope of the project. He's still trying to build a two-story sports complex, athletic facility for us to use. All the, everything that was in the original PDD is similar, it's the same as far as for the uses. Our focus was, this brings commercial development to our area. And so having that opportunity, us tabling and possibly pushing the progress of this project back, in my opinion, isn't the right move. I say we gave, we put our faith and confidence in Brad and the game on brand and what it is that they're trying to do. And I don't think because of the shape of the piece of pie has changed, I don't think that should affect, it shouldn't affect our views on how we decided to move forward with this, with this project in the first place. If it doesn't happen, then it doesn't happen. We have some dirt that's been moved a little bit. What, what is, how does that make the city worse off? Now, we do have annexed property that's in the city that we have complete control over, and we're talking about is it gonna be residential or is it gonna be commercial? Would we rather that control? Or do we want to table this, lose the whole thing, and now that's all part of the county again?
I would like to see if we could have this meeting that we discussed, this workshop, whatever it may be called, in between this council meeting, regular council meeting, and the next one. Because this will take two reads to pass. So if we were to pass this one, and I understand from speaking with Brad, that he is working with a developer for the residential portion. I don't know how this would affect him if he had to wait for the second reading. And we could always turn it down-
On the second read?
If the workshop does not go the direction we feel is good for the city. And for everybody in the entire community, because it, we need for more TK to buy into this. We need all the residential areas.
Alright, I, I'm sure saying, so the second read is what we can actually delay if we needed to, not the first read.
I hear what you're saying, but I also passed by a tower over the PTL that went bankrupt, that the county approved, and now the residents are trying to get that tower taken down. And they're going through a whole bunch of red tape getting that tower down, and I don't know, for better part of 11 years that, that I've lived here, that tower has stood. And I don't want to get to the point where the city is gonna start having buildings there, and then the guy goes bankrupt. I'm not asking to see his financials, I'm asking to see something. All we ever get are pictures. Prove to us that this is what you're gonna do. Prove to us that this is what, we, we hear about, it's, it's part of the Olympic team. We hear it's part of this, this swim product and, and, but we never see those people. We never see those agreements with this gentleman when he comes here with, and, and, and basically, that's what the school district had a problem with in regards to the pool. The school district buying into the pool aspect of him, he didn't, he, he couldn't provide those things that the school district was asking for. And that's why they haven't bought into this point. Not to say that they wouldn't, but they're, they're waiting on us to be, to do our due diligence. And that's my concern, is that we hear all of these, these plans, we hear all of these, the, these ideas and these, but we never see anything positive. We get developers to come here and they show us schematics of, of what they're gonna do and what they're not gonna do, and what it's gonna look like and what it's not gonna look like. We haven't seen any of that from him, none of that.
Well, I do believe last year, I want to say the summertime, we met with some of his investors.
And are those still investors, still in play?
He just bought 68 acres.
But he just bought, I mean, he has purchased that all out.
I understand.
And I believe when he came to us, that was one of the ways he was trying to show he's gonna be able to make this happen, is securing all these properties. I would just say that if we could always, if we say go forward with this, we can always turn it down next month for the second read. If we're not happy with whatever that we hear, if we can make workshop happen between now and then, call a special one and make it happen.
Are we limited in time by the second reading?
It's gotta be-
You gotta have seven days separation between first read and second read.
Is there a time limit that has to be?
No, sir.
So we can make it four months?
We're gonna vote to table it?
If, 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 okay, here's my question. If we don't approve the first reading of this right now, what happens?
Charlie, can you answer that?
Well, give them time to get to the microphone.
In regards to the city or in regards to the development?
Both.
It is my understanding from the developer that if he is not able to obtain his, the zoning by the, I think it's the first part of April, he loses out on a $6 million contract for somebody that's, that's purchasing a portion of the land you're considering at this point in time. That's straight from the developer. What does it do to the city as far as tabling it? Nothing at this point. You've got a valid annexation application from a single entity with no contingencies on the annexation. Yeah, if you, if you do move forward, you've, you bring in 10 acres, you rezone the rest of it. I think it ends up being a total of 48 acres plus or minus that can't be used for anything else except for what's in this PDD site plan, or stand, site standards. Whether it's the current developer or some future developer, they're held to those site standards until council decides to amend those or rezone it. So in, in regards to the city, nothing happens to the city. You know, specifically tonight, if you table it. It definitely could make this development a lot harder for that developer, who has now acquired 48 of the, 48 acres of the total, I think it was 78 to start with, and he's now got full control over 48 of it.
What do you guys care to do?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll make a motion to approve the first read.
So, okay, so, wait a minute, hold on a second, we gotta go to item number six B first.
Okay.
Six B first. Alright, so item number six B, which is the first reading of the annexation for 644-0000-046 and rezone from RUD in the county to PDD in the city, which is the 2.29 acres on the corner of Dam Road and Gardendale Road. I guess I could just say that was the motion, right? Yeah, that's fine. Did you just read that as the motion? Yep. Alright. Go ahead, Ryan, Ryan's second. Second by Ryan Richard. Any questions? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number six C on the agenda, which is the introduction of the first reading of an ordinance. City Manager Charlie Funderburk, do you want to read that out, or?
Sure, I can, I can do that, be glad to. Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight you have before you the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to rezone approximately plus or minus 38.03 acres, including tax map numbers 644-0101-030, 031, and 344 from B1 and B2 in the city to PDD in the city.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to, for the first, to approve introduction and first reading of an ordinance to rezone approximately 38.03 acres, tax map numbers as mentioned by the City Manager, 030, 031, and 344 from B1 and B2 to PDD in the city.
Motion by Ryan Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any council discussion? I think it's pretty obvious from my point, I'm voting against this. I hope I'm wrong, but I'm voting against moving forward. And that's my, my two cents. Any other council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six D on the agenda, which is the introduction of a first reading of 100% petition, 10 acres. City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight before you is the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to annex by 100% petition method and incorporate within the corporate limits of the city of TK approximately plus or minus 10 acres, which is tax map number 644-0000-027 from RUD in the county to PDD in the city, which is part of the PDD of the previous agenda item.
Okay, counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to annex and rezone tax, tax map number as mentioned by the City Manager, ending in 027, from RUD in the county to PDD in the city.
Motion by Ryan Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any council discussion? Same comments that I had before. I hope I'm wrong. Call, call the question. All in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six E on the agenda is the first reading of an amendment to ordinance number 77. City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight before you is the item heard during the joint public hearing with the Planning Commission at the beginning of the meeting. At their regular meeting on February 13th, Planning Commission did vote to conduct tonight's public hearing, pushing forward amendments to ordinance 77, sections 19-167 and 19-206.6. I believe the Planning Commission recommendation was to table a portion of this. But council, if, if you want to approve all or part or table, is, is completely up, up to you guys. So I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, what is our wish?
I'd say table it till it's-
Yeah, till it's more clear.
Till we get more clarification and-
Make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I make a motion to table item number six E.
I have a motion by Ryan Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David O'Neil. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number six F on the agenda is the introduction of a first reading to repeal and replace. City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It has been some time since we did ordinance 368. Just to bring everybody up to speed, this is required by FEMA in order to allow for our residents to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. They have now updated- They have now updated the flood maps. So in order for our residents, which I don't know that we have any homes that are built below the flood plain, so I don't know that it really takes effect, but should they have the need and ability to obtain that National Flood Insurance Program by updating this ordinance, it will allow them to do so. So this ordinance that you have before you tonight completely repeals the former ordinance three sixty-eight, and replaces it in its entirety with the South Carolina DNR model ordinance that they've provided to cities around the state for adoption.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to repeal ordinance three sixty-eight in its entirety, and to establish regulations based on the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources model ordinance to provide for the city's continued participation in the National Flood Insurance Program.
I have a motion by Jen Stalford. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Item number six G on the agenda is the resolution opposing House Bill three six five zero and House Bill three six five one. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Mayor, would you like for me to handle this? Or would you like to read the resolution for the record? Or find either way?
Just point of reference, this was the discussion that we had last meeting in regards to business licenses. The delegation or the... The House has got a bill, which is House Bill thirty-six fifty and thirty-six fifty-one, which would basically cause financial difficulty to many of the cities around the state, one of them being the city of TDK. We would lose approximately $700,000 in revenue for the city over the next two years, and would probably cause us... Probably cause us... I say it again, probably cause us to have to do a millage increase to provide the services that we provide now. And that millage increase would be about seven mills. The state does not allow us to do that because of state law. Your millage rate increase is based on your CPI, or based on the CPI as well as your population of your city. We would not qualify to do a seven-mill increase right now. This is something that I have discussed with the York County delegation, Tommy Pope, Gary Semerle, Ray Felder, to discuss that they need to change this. The mayors of Clover, Fort Mill, Rock Hill, myself and Eddie Lee from York have sent a letter to the York County delegation, asking them to reconsider this. I think recently we've seen some movement, Charlie, from the municipal association, that they're reconsidering where they're going with this House bill. So I think it's... Although it's probably not imminent right now with this year's budget, I think it's important that we still send this resolution, which is basically the resolution that the city of Clemson sent...
That is correct.
The city of Clemson sent down to the State House and to their delegation, opposing and giving the reasons why. We have copied that, and we have created our own resolution, saying that we are against them doing something with House Bill thirty-six fifty and thirty-six fifty-one. Does that make it all make sense? It's as clear as mud? So counsel, entertain a motion to approve the resolution that's before us.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution opposing House Bill thirty-six fifty and House Bill thirty-six fifty-one.
I have a motion by David O'Neil. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
So Charlie, that will get sent down to our York County delegation tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
As I guess we contact Gary Semerle?
Correct.
To who we send it to? Okay, great.
We'll get a copy to him, and we'll also send a copy to the municipal association.
Perfect, thank you, Charlie. Item number six H on the agenda is the approval of funds to replace the HVAC system in the Glenon Center. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we listed as HVAC because we weren't sure that how many folks would know what the chiller was, but basically for the air conditioning upstairs. It is a monstrous unit, and it has hit its end of life with some of its bits and pieces. And by replacing it, we get a new five-year warranty instead of piecemealing parts and Frankenstein in the machine. Would ask for council's, as this was not a budgeted item, but the warmer weather will be soon upon us, with lots of events scheduled upstairs through May and the summer months. Would ask for council's favorable permission to move forward with the purchase of this piece of equipment. We did obtain multiple bids with the most qualified low bid at $75,000 in order to replace that piece of equipment. It's going to be quite the undertaking, but we've got a great company to handle that for us, so.
Any questions for Charlie in regards to... Charlie, could you give us some kind of background as to what our other options were?
There was an option to just replace the coals, which have gone bad. It costs about forty grand to do that, and that would include renting a temporary unit that would be sitting on a flatbed truck right out in front of the Glenon Center, there in the loading dock, to keep it running. Nice and classy.
I think that was a one-year warranty.
And it was only a one-year warranty on those. Yes, this is a little more expensive than that, but it comes with a five-year warranty, and it's a brand-new system, not just replacing one part of a now-almost-ten-year-old system.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve spending reserve funds in the amount not to exceed $75,000 in order to replace the chiller for the Glenon Center.
I have a motion by Ryan Richard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen Stalford. And Ryan, could you just say "chiller" one more time?
Chiller. Chiller.
Call the question. All in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Perfect. Item number six I on the agenda is the sale of city-owned properties. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as council will recall, some time ago, approximately fifteen years ago, we were... Well, I don't know how many of y'all were here. Approximately fifteen years ago, we received properties, received these three properties. They're located on Holiday Cove. For the record, they are tax map number six-four-three, one-two-oh-one, oh-six-oh, oh-six-one, and oh-six-two, all three side-by-side lots on Holiday Cove. Previous council had declared these, as well as several other properties, as surplus properties. These are actually the last, other than the Marchin property, these are the last three parcels city-owned that council had listed as surplus. We did receive an offer on these, and council, we've placed the appraisals up at your seats. And Mayor, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to council as far as direction on what to do at this point.
David, you were the impetus to have it on the agenda, so I'm going to pass it off to you.
These three lots were... You can stop me at any time on this, Charlie, if I get swayed here. These were given to us, I'm assuming because the past owner was probably tired of paying taxes on it.
It was a charity builder. They were called Dream Builders. They dated them to the city at some point, I'm guessing for tax write-off purposes.
Right.
Not certain.
And we tried to sell them at one time, and they've been on our books for quite a while, and I've got no offers on it. And then up comes former councilman Chris Lambert Larson, who's put a bid on it. And we thought at first it was kind of low, so we tried to get a realtor to do a multiple listing, put a sign out there and try to list it. We went out to try to get a realtor to do it, and they looked at it, and nobody wanted it. I took my favorite realtor out there to look at it, and she said, "Nobody's going to want this." It's from the curb, it steps off approximately eighteen to twenty inches, and it goes straight down, straight down, seventy degrees down. It's going to take a wall and a lot of backfill, approximately $80,000 or so, depending on who you talk to. To me, I don't know why anybody would want this stuff, but we have an offer of $2,000 per lot, $6,000 total. So that's where we stand on it. We have an offer, we're supposed to consider the offer, and that's what we're here to do. Put it on the tax rolls.
We do have an offer of $6,000, but we have appraised values of $15,000 each from an appraiser, who was recommended to us by our city attorney. So we have... Those three together is $45,000, and we've been offered six. I realize that they may not be considered worth anything, but to be perfectly honest, either the house that's being built on Riley Court right now, I didn't think that property was any good either. But they're building a house on it, so I just...
I would just say, go look at the lot. I've been over there several times. I just...
I would like to address that this... We agreed that it was the RFP would go out for fifteen days, but it only went out for eleven days. So I did contact some realtors who had no idea this actually went out. So I didn't know how it was advertised, other than being on the city website, but I contend that we did not have it out as long as we had initially stated. So it needs to be put out again for the full fifteen days. And then we could actually... If I had known it was out, like, I didn't even know it was out, and I'm on every, I think, E-list serve we have here. If I had, I would have contacted the two realtors that I know that do a lot of work in TDK, who had no idea it even went out. And I would have said, "Hey, check this out."
I got two cents as well. I agree with Jen. So your two cents, your one cent's good. Just going to add to it, but I don't have an issue with Mr. Larson purchasing the property. My only concern is that if we don't go through the appropriate steps to ensure the perception is that we did this the right way. Chris has a history with the city, and he's a great guy, and he's done a lot for the city, and I'm sure we'll see him in November, you know, October, running for some type of office again. I don't have a problem with Chris getting the property. My only concern is if we... Did we throw it out? Did we reach out to realtors? There's, you know, there's dozens of them that live in the city. Hey, could we get an MLS number on this piece of property, these three, and make a bid? In Chris's defense, he may be able to get them for a thousand bucks apiece, instead of two. And if we agree as a whole that, hey, anything reasonable that puts money in our pockets, gets it off our roll, whatever, then let's list it, let people make bids on it, and accept the highest bid, that simple. But... And so people at least see the MLS listing, they'll know, hey, it's going to be listed for, say, two weeks, whatever we decide to do. It's there. Now, who's the highest bidder?
What did we do wrong last time, I wonder?
I don't know, but no realtor picked it up, so we need to reach out, or staff...
What did we do wrong last time?
That it wasn't picked up?
Well, how was it advertised?
Posted on the city's website on February twenty-second.
Twenty-fourth is what the date says. The date says twenty-fourth.
Yeah. In the past, we have followed up by contacting realtors. We did not at this point. I did not spend money on advertising it in the newspaper. I just put it on our city RFP website, where we generally get bids from. Put it up on the twenty-second, bids were due on February, bids were due by two o'clock on the ninth of March.
Sixth.
What's it cost a realtor to list three pieces of property?
It was due on the sixth, and it was set out on the twenty-fourth.
Anybody know the realty business?
$600.
It'll cost them a couple hundred bucks apiece to list it?
Depends on how much they list, I mean, how deep in they list it.
My thing is, as long as there's an MLS number, and it shows we did due diligence, to put it out there?
Correct, the due diligence.
Then we're okay. They don't have to spin a dime. Create a number for it, throw it on some website, and in two weeks, who's the high bidder? If it's Chris at 500 bucks apiece, then so be it. He just stole them. But we did it right.
They're assuming, I guess, that some realtor wants these lots.
Well, if we have to ask somebody a favor, even, you know? Just that way, it shows that the due diligence was done, is my thought.
I'd like to make a motion that we instruct the city manager to put this back out for bid on an RFP for fifteen days, contact local realtors in the area, and ask them if they are interested in putting it on a MLS list, but have it out for fifteen days. Do you want to add to that?
Just to clarify, will we... Bob, is that going to get us in anything if we don't contact certain... How many offices, or if we don't contact all the major branches, or is that going to be an issue, or...
It's out for public.
Okay, okay. Great.
And do we add, we accept the highest bid in the motion?
I think it needs to come back to us. I think it needs to come back, and we determine if, you know, that's what we want to do.
Who really took up the offer?
Come back, and it's going to have to be an ordinance, because it's a sale of city property. It needs to come back, and you have a first read of an ordinance to approve that particular transaction.
So that is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen Stalford. Any other council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number seven on the agenda is the city manager's report. Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Brief tonight, our Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament will be this Friday. Thank you for all... To all the participants that signed up to play. We have got approximately ninety golfers participating with us this year, which is a nice uptick from last year. We're looking forward to seeing all of our participants on Friday for our 12:00 PM start. Spring Pick Me Up Day will be on Saturday, April twenty-second. Please contact Joey Bluthen if you have a group that would like to volunteer, if there is a specific area you would like to have considered for a project that day. All of our summer camps are also posted on our website under the Parks and Recreation page for parents looking for some exciting activities for their kids this summer. We are nearing the end of early bird registration for the Beach and Swim Center. Please register by the end of the month to take advantage of the savings. We're already meeting... Staff is already meeting with our pool management company to plan another fantastic summer with them around the pool. And last but not least, Camp Cadet applications are being accepted through April the seventh. Camp Cadet will be held June nineteenth through the twenty-third, and is for rising fifth, sixth, and seventh graders. Camp is free and funded entirely on donation. Students must be nominated by a teacher, school official, or a community leader, such as any of you on council. So that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions for Charlie?
Charlie, I know that one of the residents during the last city council meeting on Point Clear brought up an issue regarding the cleanup after the water that needed to be...
Yes, ma'am.
And I know you have already addressed that with the resident, but if you could just share that with everyone, so they realize we have followed up?
Yes. There is a common driveway off of Point Clear Drive, and where that common driveway ended, we have now, are in process of constructing a gravel driveway down to a new lift station that we have had constructed as part of these sewer rehabilitation project that we are almost a hundred percent complete with. As we told the homeowner that did come here to city council, the tree stumps that were there that he wished to have removed, we did have those ground down, and staff is working on reseeding a portion of that vacant lot that he owns that did have grass along that driveway. So working on getting that cleaned up, but didn't want to do anything until all of our contractors were done going in and out. We did not tear up the common driveway down in that area. We did find some remains of an old one that were buried under about eight inches of mud and dirt. So I guess at some point, there may have been asphalt down through there, but we are not installing asphalt back through there. But the asphalt that we did tear up at the beginning has all been, it's basically fresh asphalt at this point. So his issues, I believe, and concerns have all been addressed.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I've got one thing, Charlie. I had some parents that wanted to be here tonight, and they weren't able to make it. But their concern or issue were just questions they had. It was down at the end of Harbor Court. Child had an allergic reaction, peanut allergy reaction to a restaurant that they went to, pulled in the driveway, called 911, throat's closing up, and it took... It was about nineteen minutes, according to the mother, from the time they called with the peanut allergy, until the time that the EMS vehicle showed up at the end of Harbor Court. And so her concern was, do we have first responders at the fire station, or that are policemen? at the fire station, or that are, that are policemen? And I could get you dates and all that other stuff, but, and her, her biggest concern was, why, why did it take 19 minutes for an ambulance to get here when we have first responders a block up the road at the fire station, or up the street that, you know, maybe in the blue uniform, or it was just one of those?
We do not have first responders on our police department. We do now have EMTs on our fire department. If you can get me some, some dates and stuff?
I could get you that information.
Definitely can check into it, both with the 911 call logs, as well as chief of EMS with Piedmont, as well as our fire chief.
Okay.
Be happy to.
Just to make sure, you know, information's being distributed properly, because 19 minutes seemed a bit excessive.
All right, we move on to item number eight on the agenda, public comments. Are there any public comments? Being none, move on to item number nine, which is council comments, and would you like to start us off?
I'm good, I talked too much already tonight.
Jen?
I'll just retweet the plea for volunteers for the beautification committee. We are having the workday tomorrow morning, and we do have the Facebook page, so I understand it's not feasible for those who work, so if you let us know you'd like to volunteer, we can give you stuff that you can do on your own time.
Thank you, Jen.
Or if the in-laws are visiting for spring break?
Yes, pull some weeds.
David?
As part of a, I'm, I'm the comptroller of the TK Veterans Association, we donate at least $250 to the beautification committee every year. And doing our taxes this year, I noticed we didn't donate $250 to the beautification committee this year, so we're gonna make it up. When we do donate $250 to the beautification this year, we're gonna make it $500 this year. Somehow, we, the comptroller missed it. I don't know how he did that. He's usually very good about that, so. I owe you a check for $500 this year instead of 250. I don't know how he missed it, so.
That's awesome, it'll go very far.
The veterans are gonna, the veterans are gonna make it up to you this year.
Just make sure it's in his review and he doesn't get a raise for that.
Right, right. So, I, we'll, we'll present that to you at the Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you.
What we usually do. Sorry about that. That's all I had.
I don't have any council comments, except for the fact of it's spring. Finally got through it, yeah. Holland is great. Item number 10 on the agenda is executive session. Entertained a motion, motion is to go into executive session for legal advice regarding corporate limits, and contractual matters related to York Electric regarding financial, finance, franchise fees. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're in executive session.